Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the April fourteenth meeting of the governing body to order. Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Mayor Collins.
Present.
Dr. Emmons. Mr. Escabel.
Here.
Mr. Laborne. Mr. Moody.
Present.
Dr. Rennie.
Present.
Mr. Royball.
Present.
Mr. Seagrave.
Present.
Mr. White.
Present.
Dr. Aldrich.
Present.
One member is absent. We do have a quorum.
Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consent agenda. All agenda items listed with the designation of CA are considered to be routine items by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the governing body so requests and support by two other members is received. Any item removed from the consent agenda will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda.
All right. Are there any items a member of the governing body would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Aldrich.
America on seventeen A and nineteen C, please.
Take them one at a time. Seventeen A?
Yes.
Concur.
Okay. Seventeen A has been removed and you said nineteen C isn't Charlie?
C, correct.
Concur. Concur.
All right. Those two items have been removed. Are there any others? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
So move.
So it's been moved by Dr. Aldrich, seconded by Mr. Seagrave. All those in favor of the consent agenda as amended, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the consent agenda is approved with seventeen A and nineteen C removed.
Number six, eight, public hearing for a bar and grill liquor license application filed with the city clerk's office for Frontier Days LLC. Doing business as Chiba Hut thirty-eight thirty-eight Atkin Street, Cheyenne, Wyoming.
All right, we'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this bar and grill license for Chiba Hut? No one in the audience? Please come forward if you want to speak to us. You have to push that button till the green light comes on. There you go. Would you introduce yourself, please?
Hello, my name is Seth Larson. My title is Chief Relationship Officer at Chiba Hut Toasted Subs. I would be a partner on Frontier Days and the location at thirty-eight thirty-eight Atkin Street. I currently reside down in Berthood, Colorado, but have been coming up here for years and here to represent Chiba Hut and answer any questions you guys might have.
Sounds good. Can you tell us a little bit about Chiba Hut?
Yeah, we're a toasted camp, toasted sandwich concept. We have seventy-seven total locations across the United States. We have a long history of operating company stores, even though we're a franchise brand. We've owned and operated about fifteen locations over the years. We did refranchise those. All of our locations do serve alcohol. It is a smaller percentage of our sales, about nine percent total. We're a sandwich shop first and foremost. We provide great hospitality. We pay our people really well and looking forward to doing business here in Cheyenne.
We're excited that you're going to be here. Thank you. Any questions from the governing body? Dr. Aldrich.
Mayor Collins through you. I have a couple of questions. The first is, what is your entry level wage that you're planning on for this Chiba Hut?
I was just actually communicating with our office to figure that we're on the goal line of hiring a GM who is here locally. I believe he's starting in the seventy thousand dollar range. We, again, we try to go above and beyond. We're not a race to the bottom with minimum wage. We pay our people really well. Down in Colorado, we start them at about sixteen fifty an hour. And we do have a tipping option. I know everyone's tired of tipping everywhere, but it is something that we've done for a really long time and it so about three to four dollars extra in tips per hour, sixteen fifty starting wage. And we would be looking to hire at this location about thirty people. Thank you.
I also was just curious, on your business card, you, it says tie stick with all the peppers in a ranch water. Is that like your favorite sandwich is on your business cards?
It's my favorite sa- it's in my email signature as well. Karaoke chicken sandwich. It's delicious. The ranch water is my, is my favorite adult beverage. It's tequila and soda water with extra lime. I'm watching, it's like the poor, poor person's margarita. When you're in your forties, you gotta watch your calories.
Welcome to Ward Three. We're excited to have you in our ward and in our community. Thank you.
Absolutely. I appreciate that, doctor.
Mr. Escabel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, what will your hours of operation be?
Historically at Chiba Hut, ten to ten is the minimum expectation. I would imagine that we would probably go to midnight at this location if allowed. But ten to ten historically has been the hours of operation for Chiba Hut, ten AM to ten PM.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Welcome to Cheyenne. Anybody else in the audience? All right. Any other comments from members of the governing body? Hearing none, the purpose of the public hearing has been met. We'll assign this item to the financial committee and sir, that means it'll meet next Tuesday, I believe. Yep, at noon in this room. Thank you.
Number seven, ordinance third reading amending the official zoning map of the city of Cheyenne, changing the zoning classification for land located southwest intersection of Wild Bluff and Ogden Road from MR medium density residential to NR two neighborhood residential medium density.
All right, we have a zone change before us to facilitate a new housing development on ten point nine two acres of property. Is there anybody here in the audience that would like to speak to this zone change? Okay. Hearing none, Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on third and final reading and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. White. Comments from members of the governing body. Hearing none, madam clerk, would you take the vote?
Dr. Aldrich?
Yes.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Emmons? Mr. Escabel?
Aye.
Mr. Laborne?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Dr. Rennie?
Yes.
Mr. Royball?
Yes.
Mr. Seagrave?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
The zone change is approved on third and final reading.
Number eight, ordinance second reading amending section ten point twenty-four point one nine zero, critical traffic control areas, creation and administration, enhanced penalties of the municipal code of the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming, modifying the provisions governing the creation and enforcement of such areas.
All right, go out to the audience, but before we do, we passed this ordinance last fall and we did our first, our first road, which was Gardenia Boulevard, and we learned a couple of things from that. And so we brought the ordinance back to make a couple of changes recommended by our prosecutor and just a few other housekeeping things we learned that might make this a little easier to administer. We'll go out to the audience. Does anybody in the audience want to speak to the ordinance on second reading? Hearing none, Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. White. Comments from members of the governing body. Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the ordinance is approved on second reading.
Number nine, ordinance second reading amending chapter ten point eighty-two, motor assisted scooters, electric bicycles and bicycles equipped with GPS of Title Ten, vehicles and traffic of the municipal code of the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming, authorizing dockless vehicle companies to conduct business in the city using the city's formal procurement process, making a conforming amendment and repealing obsolete provisions.
All right, we have an ordinance amending the way we handle licensing of dockless vehicles, including those motorized scooters we see all around town. Is there anybody in the audience that wanted to speak to that today? Hearing none, Mr. Laborne.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve on second reading and I so move.
Seconded by Mr. White.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move to amend.
Okay.
On ten point eight two point one one zero under A two, I would like to add at the end of that sentence in a timely manner. So we'll read operations and maintenance plans, including a description of how the proposed operator will respond in a timely manner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been seconded by Mr. Moody. We'll go out to the audience and could you give me that, that section again, please?
Ten point eight two point one one zero, A two.
Okay, so we have an amendment on ten point, you got it, to amend, to add the language in a timely manner. Anybody in the audience want to speak to that? How about from the governing body?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dr. Aldrich.
Mayor Collins through you. In our previous ordinance that we had regarding the dockless vehicles, there had been some language that gave them a timeframe for when they needed to respond to, for instance, malfunctioning scooters or picking them up in a certain amount of time. And I see that a lot of that has been removed from the current ordinance. And so I would just like to make sure that somewhere in there that as they're preparing their request for proposal, their RFP, that they know that doing it, the timeliness is important so that we don't have them laying around town or broken and dysfunctional for long periods of time.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Rennie.
In a timely manner seems rather nebulous to me. I mean, someone's definition of timely, different people's definition of time was going to be different. So if the purpose is to make a last minute amendment, to me, I, I have a hard time supporting this. I would rather have something more specific.
Any other comments?
Mayor Collins through you.
Dr. Aldrich.
I would like to contend that this is in the section that is for the RFP and it sends the message that we are concerned about the timeliness without mandating or dictating a forty-eight hour or a twenty-four hour or a seven day period in which they need to respond. But it will allow those who are preparing an RFP to know that that is something that we value and are looking for.
Other comments?
Mr. Mayor, through you, to our city attorney. In a timely manner, how can we, how does that legally, in a timely manner? Is it? I mean, how do you define that?
Mr. Brody, do you have words of wisdom for us, sir?
Mr. Mayor, John Brody, City Attorney. Councilman, I think that would just come down to the discretion of the procurement department within the city. They would obviously read this code provision and then try to incorporate that, that timely requirement into the documents that they would issue as part of the RFP, but it would be within your city staff's discretion, I think, at that point.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I do have TJ Bartleboard with his hand raised.
Mr. Bartleboard, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is TJ Bartleboard, Purchasing Manager. To Councilman Royball's question and to Dr. Aldrich's point, the week, the, the request for proposal, we can either mandate that we want a set amount of time for a response or we can let the proposers tell us what their intended response time is and we can use that as a scoring criteria to select the firm that best meets our needs and shows the most responsiveness to our request for proposal. So I think that the, we'll have that mechanism in the RFP to, to find the firm that's going to best help our town and our, our community with our goal. So hope that helps a little bit on where that language could lie and how we would interpret that and enforce that.
TJ, I think it does. Thank you, sir. Other thing else from the governing body on the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Mr. Royball, Dr. Rennie are knows the amendment is passed. We're back on the main motion.
Mayor Collins, I have another amendment, please.
Okay.
I would like to remove I, ten point eight two point one one zero, number eight and also under A, A eight and also B nine, which both are an added requirement. It says any other requirement deemed appropriate by the mayor or his or her designee under the operations and maintenance plan as well as under number nine, which is the RFP proposal shall be evaluated based on criteria established in the RFP. I think it makes it very difficult to, oh, I'm sorry. I'll let you get a second first.
Sir, second.
All right, Mr. Moody seconds it. Go ahead, Dr. Aldrich.
Mayor Collins, I think that when someone is preparing an RFP and I spend a lot of my day job working with RFPs, the item number eight and item number nine really make it difficult for someone who is doing an RFP if at any given time we can decide that we're going to add criteria to those RFPs. So I would like to just remove that ambiguity.
All right, we'll go out to the audience. Does anybody in the audience want to speak to the amendment to get rid of two lines in section ten point eight two point one one zero, A eight? And then I believe it is B nine. Yep. Anybody? How about from the governing body?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. I'm gonna agree with my colleague from Ward Three, cuz I mean, not saying you, let's say twenty years from now, there might be somebody that's against them. They could potentially ban it. I said that during the Finance Committee. So I'm just looking at from a long-term perspective. It could be somebody that doesn't like them and they say there, there's a moratorium on them. So it's really just to protect it for the long-term health of a e-scooter company. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Moody, I understand what you're saying, but I would say that the criteria that was put in there would only be for the request for proposal. Once we have a contract, I don't believe it says that I can go in and, or a future America go in and make those changes, but I have no problem having it removed. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Rennie.
I was, I was just curious. Perhaps our attorney or Mr. Battleboard can explain why that language was added back into the RFP. I assume there was a valid reason.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Rennie. John Brody, City Attorney. The reason that we inserted that language was to really allow for flexibility for, as the city continues to become more sophisticated in how this RFP process goes forward, that there may be, you know, policy goals that need to be incorporated in the RFP that this original draft didn't contemplate. So the idea is that it maintains that flexibility. So should compliance identifier, another aspect that the RFP needs to address, then that could just be incorporated into the RFP when it gets rolled out the next, the next time it would be open. And then I guess really that flexibility would also allow to avoid six weeks to get the change put in the ordinance to then allow that flexibility in the or, in the, the program.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Wait, Jennifer.
Mr. Mayor, I do have TJ Bartleboard again.
Welcome back, Mr. Bartleboard.
Thanks, Mayor. TJ Bartleboard, Purchasing Manager. To just add on to what our city attorney stated, he, he made a great point that, that's and the, just to kind of add on to the thought is the, the ordinance says at a minimum, we want our RFP to check these boxes, but we ought to have the flexibility to add or remove criteria in the future that we feel necessary to the procurement. And just to make a note for, to the comment from Dr. Aldrich, the RFP won't have a, a scoring criteria for the mayor's discretion. The, the scoring rubric will be standard across all the freeze proposal that's issued. So that's not really a discretion of whether or not we like the proposal. It's just discretion to add other scoring criteria that we deem appropriate for, for this, for this procurement. So just that, wanted to add that note, standing by for any other questions. Thank you.
TJ, I don't remember when I read this, how often these would go back out for RFP?
TJ Bartleboard, Purchasing Manager. Mayor, I believe our intent was to do it on an annual basis and I think the RFP could speak to, we would, I'd imagine my, my vision for how this would work with, to start it on an annual basis and once we get an established program, the potential for maybe a, a contract with renewal options beyond that. But I think until we get established, our, we were kind of visioning this happening annually. And I'm sure our city attorney can elaborate if I've misstepped or if he has any other shots, thoughts to share. Thank you.
Thank you, TJ. All right, anybody else?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Aldrich.
Mayor Collins through you. I, I understand the, what Mr. Bartleboard was saying about that it would not be something that the, your, the flexibility would be in the RFP that was put out, not in the bids that were accepted. However, I, I see it as part of our job and our due diligence as a council of creating that criteria for those RFPs. And so having the ability in our, in our ordinance for the mayor or a designate to be able to change that criteria for an RFP without this council's or a council's oversight, I believe is a, a shirking of our responsibility.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Rennie.
As most of us know, we rarely, most RFPs are developed within the administration and we, we rarely look at them, vet them or approve them. So in the fact, to me, the fact that this is not in the, this language is not in the contract itself and only in an RFP and does give the administration more flexibility, really we're not shirking our duties because we don't look at every RFP that goes out of here. Actually, this is somewhat of an exception. So I think the flexibility, the request for flexibility from the administration and not having to go back through a six-week process, ordinance process, if, if they do find some things that aren't working or there that they need to change annually is probably worthwhile. So I would be opposed to the amendment.
Anyone else in the governing body? All right, we're on the amendment. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
May I see the hands of the nose? Mr. White, Mr. Escabel? Mr. Seagrave, Mr. Royball, Dr. Rennie, that motion fails. We're back on the main motion. Comments? Yes.
I have a proposed amendment.
Okay.
So on page two, under ten point eight two point one one O of, look at A and then you go to number two, I would like to delete number three and delete number four and number five. And then if we turn to page three.
Mr. Moody, if I could, these are, these are under definitions.
For, for the community engagement strategies, yes, I'd like to delete that and I'd like to delete programs, reduce rates and data sharing capabilities and safety measures of rider education.
I'm, I'm, I guess maybe I'm not following you, sir. You're on, could you give me the section, please?
Yes, sir. Ten point eight two point one one O.
Yep.
A and then number two. And then we're under A, so keep two, but delete number three. And number four.
Yep.
Number five and number seven.
Um, I don't have a number seven.
Yeah, programs reduced rates.
H two.
Oh, okay, I was, I was in the wrong section. All right. Safety measures, data sharing and
Community engagement.
Strategies.
And programs reduce rates.
Okay, is there a second?
Oh, and then I'd like to also, on page three, just to be consistent, so on the very top page three, or number six, community engagement responsiveness. And then number seven, programs reduced rates.
And that's under B.
Correct.
B six and seven.
Okay. Is there a second on that amendment?
I would second that for the sake of discussion.
So we, do you want to explain your amendment before we go to the public?
Yes. So the reason I'm doing this is because that's a lot for a company to do. I mean, with the safety measures and rider education, again, that's up to the public to know about it and we don't have any laws requiring helmets for bicycles. So why do that for these e-scooters? Number four, that's his privacy of a private company. Number five, again, that could cost a private company a lot of money, keeping out the lower companies versus the large companies. Number seven, if they're a new company, let's say they don't have an opportunity for, you know, doing this. They have to be established. And then for number B there, same things, just basically keeping it consistent with the amendment.
Okay, we're out to the audience. Anybody in the audience want to speak to the amendment? Okay, how about from the governing body?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Aldrich.
Mayor Collins through you. I am, I would be hesitant to eliminate three, four, five and seven. I believe number three, when we're talking about safety measures and rider education, I think that this is basic safety that a lot of times is on a decal or on a metal plate that's actually on the scooter itself that reminds riders of things like that they're not supposed to be riding them on sidewalks. I think that that rider education and those safety measures are important. And I would think that from a liability standpoint, the contractor as well as the city would be in favor of reminding people about what the safety measures and rider education are. It's not, I don't think it has anything to do with helmets, although, although I'm sure that those are recommended. The data sharing and reporting capabilities, I think that any company that's doing this and as a city, we would be interested in that to find out where they're being most commonly utilized, what the average rate of speed is. There's all sorts of data that can be collected from these. I know with geo fencing that has some reporting opportunities that we may want to in utilize. I also think that community engagement strategies is important for any company that's wanting to lease scooters in our community, that they would want to be able to engage the community and market these so that they're not just sitting on street corners and along the streets. And I think a program for reduced rates would be really helpful to have a reduced rate for students or for senior citizens or for special events. And I think that just gives a company who may be doing an RFP a lot of flexibility in being able, in all of these areas, being able to differentiate themselves from other competitors and other potential contractors in the RFP process. So for that reason, I will be a no vote on this amendment.
Anyone else in the governing body?
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Rennie.
I assume Mr. Bartleboard is still paying attention. Is there, I mean, historically, we ask for this information and/or these provisions and have you ever gotten any pushback from any of the companies that we, that have been in the city in the past?
Mr. Bartleboard.
Mayor, City Council, TJ Bartleboard, Purchasing Manager. Dr. Rennie, I feel that all of the questions or these kind of items that we're considering in this RFP are pretty standard for what we would, when we're looking for qualified contractors, I think these are all very relevant items that we would consider. And now I don't know that I've ever seen where we've gotten pushback from asking for these types of qualifications. I think it ensures the city gets a qualified and competent contractor to perform the services. So I, I do think that they are appropriate to include as is.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, TJ. Anybody else in the governing body on the amendment?
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll withdraw the amendment.
I don't think you can do that now. It's owned by the body. So we need to vote on it. Anybody else? All right, all those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Yeah.
Amendment fails with Mr. Moody voting yes. We're back on the main motion.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one more amendment. So on page three, under nine and C, so over C, it says the city shall review and evaluate all proposals received in response to the RFP in accordance with the procedures established in the RFP in the city's formal procurement process. After that, it says the city may select one or more. All I want to delete is one or more and say the city may select any operators based on proposals received. So it'd be a simple amendment, taking away one or more and just say any operators.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to change one or more to any. You want to explain?
The reason I'm doing this, Mr. Mayor, is because I saw the intent from Finance Committee is to have one. And if we just allow one, that's state sanctioned monopoly. We don't want to just have one company. Let's have multiple companies. The free market works out itself. Let's have a lot of these, you know, three or four companies. That'd be great. Some cities are reducing it to just two or three max and that actually does not allow for healthy competition. three max, and that actually does not allow for healthy competition. So let's let the free market work it out. That's what the intent was based on the letter. And I'm just doing this to allow for more flexibility for even smaller companies. Thank you.
Okay, let's go out to the audience. Um, anybody in the audience want to speak to this amendment? Hearing none, how about from the governing body? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Amendment fails with Mr. Moody voting yes. Now we're back on the main motion. Any other amendments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the amendment as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
May I see the hands of the nose? Mr. Laborn and Mr. Moody are knows the ordinance is approved on second reading.
Number 10, ordinance first reading, amending and updating the solid waste fee schedule in accordance with section, section eight point forty-four point zero, one, zero of municipal code of the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming and repealing ordinance number forty-five seventy-one.
All right, we'll refer this to the finance committee?
Number 11, ordinance first reading, repealing chapter twelve point twenty-eight downtown graffiti abatement pilot program of title twelve, street sidewalks and public places of the municipal code of the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming.
We'll refer this one to the public services committee.
Number 12, resolution granting an exception to the two oh one agreement for the owner of the property located of south of High Plains Road and west of South Greeley Highway between Robert Avenue and Deech Lane.
All right, this is a request for a two one agreement. Um, a couple of weeks ago, we postponed this item to give the applicant a little bit of time to, uh, work with staff to get an outside users agreement for water. Um, I would tell you that there was maybe a little bit of a miscommunication between our staff and, uh, and the applicant, which caused them to be able to miss being able to do that in a timely manner. So I would ask for the governing body's indulgence and maybe, uh, postponing that one more time, just because we, um, um, I don't think handled that maybe as smoothly as we could have. But at this point, I will go out to the audience to, uh, see if there's any comments on the two oh one, uh, application. Ms. Keller, welcome.
Hello, Mayor Collins, uh, and, uh, members of the council. Thank you. My name is Tanya Keller. And I am the real estate associate broker representing the Winchels, which are the property owners and they're here with me today. Um, so we have now, uh, submitted that application. Uh, we were invoiced over the weekend and so that's the final thing that hasn't been done. But we have finally, um, submitted that outside water users agreement. Uh, it just turned into a really, uh, tricky process because we had applied for this in the past, but that has since then expired. And so, um, uh, BOPU did not think that we had to go back through the process and it took about, um, nine, 10 days to get a clear answer. And then by that time we had arrived at public service meeting and that we get that, um, application filled out and we are working on, uh, the payment portion.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions? Thanks, Tanya. Anybody else in the audience want to speak to this, uh, two oh one exception? How about from the governing? Oh, I need an amendment first. Mr. Seagrave.
Mr. Mayor, the motion to adopt failed at the public services committee. Therefore, there is no recommendation. However, for the sake of discussion, I move to adopt.
Second.
The second by Mr. Roybel. Comments from members of the governing body?
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Reni.
Miss, moved to postpone for two weeks.
Second.
It's moved by Dr. Reni, seconded by Mr. Seagrave to postpone for two weeks. Um, comments from the audience? Above from the governing body? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? The item is postponed until the April twenty eighth meeting of the governing body.
Next item is seventeen A on page three. Cooperative agreement between the city of Cheyenne and the Wyoming Department of Transportation for twenty twenty-five thermoplastic pavement markings.
All right, we'll go out to the audience. Does anybody want to speak to this agreement between YDOT and the city of Cheyenne on thermoplastic pavement markings? Hearing none, Mr. Laborn.
Mayor, the recommendation of the finance committee is to approve an amount.
Can we have a microphone?
Thank you.
Excuse me. Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the finance committee is to approve an amount not to exceed two hundred and thirty-four thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moody. Comments from members of the governing body. Dr. Aldrich.
Yes, sir. Mayor Collins through you. I just, I asked for this to be, um, pulled from the consent agenda because I think it's really important for our constituents and for the public to know that, um, the city, uh, could go out and do this on its own, but in a effort to really be, um, good stewards of the money that we are using out of our twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-six optional one percent sales tax fund that, uh, we are working collaboratively with, uh, the Wyoming Department of Transportation, um, on this project. And I'm just wondering if, um, our city engineer might be able to tell us um, what he believes the cost would be if we were not collaborating with YDOT and we're trying to do this on our own. If, um, he would know about what that ballpark figure would be.
Mr. Cobb, do you have your crystal ball?
Mayor, through you to Dr. Aldrich. Dr. Aldrich, I, I could guess for you, but it, let's just say I, I think we're probably saving approximately twenty, twenty-five percent, um, is my best guess, man.
So maybe, maybe forty thousand dollars?
Mayor, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor Collins through you. Um, while that may not seem like, um, a lot of money in the amounts that we deal with, I think that um, every amount that we can save is one less, um, is a dollar that we can use somewhere else. And so I appreciate the city engineer's office working cooperatively with the Wyoming Department of Transportation to, um, be good stewards of our taxpayer funds.
Anyone else in the governing body?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Seagrave.
I would, I was not able to, uh, attend the meeting. I'm just curious when we expect the work to be completed. I would hope before frontier days, but wonder if we could get a.
Mr. Cobb, do you know the date?
Mayor, through, through you to Councilman Seagrave. Mr. Seagrave, I, we don't have a date yet, sir. Um, just for our agreement with them. I don't, I don't even have an actual letting date from them off the top of my head.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Laborn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have discussed this with the city traffic engineer and the YDOT, um, regional, uh, engineer. And I'm very hopeful we're going to get a substantial amount of this done downtown where we really need it. Um, those markings have, uh, been pretty faded. And of course, that's where, as has been pointed out here, is where a lot of people are, are hopefully down there all year, but definitely during frontier week. So although this is, uh, a good process, uh, we need to do more. Those markings are critical to individuals who are crossing at that crosswalk. And I think we all know the problems we've had in our community with crosswalks and the dangers that can happen, uh, with drivers that aren't paying as much attention as they should. So, um, I speak in favor of this, um, motion and believe that we need to even do more. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Moody.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Um, I want to echo my colleague from Ward one. Not only that, but it does fit one of our city goals for more safety, especially regarding, uh, traffic. And we want to prevent, you know, less tragedies with regards to the crosswalks. Thank you, sir.
Comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the cooperative agreement, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Agreement is approved.
Next item is nineteen C on page four. Consideration of bid number E dash fourteen dash twenty-five for finishing asphalt hot mix, tack oil and cold mix on an annual basis for the city of Cheyenne Street and Alley Division.
I'm always glad that you have to read that and not me. We'll go out to the audience and see if there's anybody who wants to talk about, uh, our asphalt and hot mix and cold mix, um, contract. Hearing none, Mr. Laborn.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the finance committee is to accept the bid from JTL Group Incorporated, doing business as Knife River for the purchase of, purchase of by two minutes asphalt hot mix in amount not to exceed three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. And cold mix in an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars. And the bid from Simon Contractors for tack oil in an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand, two hundred dollars for a total amount not to exceed four hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. And I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moody. Comments from members of the governing body on the contract. Dr. Aldrich.
Mayor Collins through you. Um, I was hopeful that there would be somebody from Public Works that might be able to um, just talk about the, uh, percentage change over last year, um, in these prices. Um, and, oh, thank you. And, um, would also be able to, um, I understand that this actually is a decrease, so I was curious to find out about that.
Mr. Lavoy, welcome.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Craig Lavoy, Public Works. Uh, yes, last year we paid ninety dollars and fifty cents. It did reduce to ninety dollars for the hot mix. Um, I, that's almost identical from last year. I don't think there's a large percentage, but it did hold prices in the oil. Market is not something I'm an expert on. Uh, the tonnage for the cold mix did go up from a hundred and ninety-five to two twenty-five. That is a little bit more than normal, but cold mix has always been fluctuating. It's not the best product. Well, I don't want to say it's not the best product. It's, it's best product for cold environments, but it does change on how they make it and the probably the mixed design changes a little bit could, could change that significantly from one year to the next. Um, and as far as tax oil, that, that does follow along with the Ford of three dollar and sixty a gallon. That's probably more in line with the oil dropping.
Dr. Aldrich.
Mayor Collins through you. I just, uh, want to, um, once again point out that, um, our department spent a lot of time and a lot of energy, I know, working with Mr. Bartleboard out of the treasurer's office to um, go out for bid on items and to try and make sure that we are getting, um, the most product or the most service, um, for the dollars that we're expending. And, uh, I just appreciate the due diligence, um, that our employees take in order to make sure that uh, we are being good stewards of those, uh, public dollars. Thank you.
Any other comments from members? Thanks, Craig. Any other comments from members of the governing body? Hearing none, all those in favor of the bid, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? This bid is also approved.
Next item is twenty B on page five, voucher report.
All right, is there anybody in the audience or on the governing body that would like to speak to the vouchers? Hearing none, next item.
Announcement of a public hearing to be held April twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five at six o'clock PM in city council chambers, twenty-one oh one O'Neil Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming. And via electronic conference meeting for a winery liquor license application filed with the city clerk's office for wagon hound wine LLC, doing business as wagon hound wine company. Sixteen ten Capital Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming. Announcement that effective the week of April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, finance and public services committee meetings will be held in city council chambers. Twenty-one oh one O'Neil Avenue, other business.
All right, is there anybody here in the audience that would like to speak to the governing body under other business? Hearing none, how about from the governing body?
Yes.
Dr. Aldrich.
Mayor Collins, um, I would just like to remind everyone that, uh, this Saturday will, we will hold our Ward three council and coffee from uh, nine to eleven AM at the Dos Bog located at College in Pershing. Um, while it is, um, Easter weekend, uh, we are committed to, um, making sure that our constituents have an opportunity to visit with council members.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Moody.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. I just want to say I will not be there. I'm helping with an Easter econ with the Knights of Columbus. So do apologize for that. Um, and also I, uh, Shin Young was great. I was interviewed by NTD Network on it. So if you want to see it, just go there. And also happy Passover and happy Easter, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just wanted to let folks know that um, the Rooted in Cheyenne Spring Planting Event is set to take place on May seventeenth at seven thirty in the morning till noon. And, uh, my understanding is that there's only a few slots left for volunteers. So if you would like to volunteer for this event, um, I've done it several times. It's a, it's a great event. Planting trees in the, uh, right of way around our community. I think, uh, we're up to seventeen hundred trees over the course of the program. Um, I'd encourage folks to get signed up for it.
Thank you, Mr. White. Mr. Escobell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Just wanted to remind everybody Wednesday at one o'clock, we'll be unveiling, uh, bronze for Vernon Baker across the street in the civic, civic commons area. And hopefully everybody shows up. I hear his, uh, uh, wife is going to be here. So big event there for that.
Yep, it's going to be a fun day. Anybody else?
I neglected, yes, Mayor Collins. I neglected to remind everyone that the furball, uh, which benefits the Cheyenne Animal Shelter will be held um, this on the twenty-fifth. And so, um, a week from Friday. And I believe that there are tickets still available. So as the council's representative to the Cheyenne Animal Shelter Board, I would encourage, uh, your participation.
Thank you. Mr. Laborn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, in the very recent past, there's been a lot of action and discussion of spatial analysis and movement in the city for security reasons and, uh, for space reasons. And I'm very curious, Mr. Mayor, when we would want to really start taking a look at the expenditures involved in creating flex space at the, uh, new courthouse that we have downtown. It is, that second floor is, has uh, some of those factors ready. But I think it's going to take some attention to do that. And I, uh, recognize that our reserves right now are substantial and that construction costs are not going to go down, I don't believe. But it would really be beneficial if we took a look at that and really had some idea of when and how that might happen since, uh, we do have the report of this building. We do know that there's been a lot of discussion about, uh, moving around, excuse me. And so, um, I'm very interested in pursuing, uh, some knowledge about that. What exists? What might be accomplished? Because that's flex space is going to be used at some point. And I think it's time that we, uh, took a look at that and tried to understand it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Laborn. Anybody else? All right, hearing none, we're adjourned. Thank you so much. Happy Easter. Happy Passover, everyone.